Good evening. I'd like to call this Planning Commission for May 12, 2020 to order. And before we get started, I need to read a COVID update. Guidelines for presiding over teleconference meetings. Good evening and thank you for viewing our May, I'm sorry. Yeah, May 12, 2020, meeting of the Arcade of Planning Commission. As you know, the Planning Commission meeting is being held as a teleconference in response to local efforts to reduce the spread of the COVID-19 virus. Before we start, I want to thank the community for their efforts to practice social distancing. Social distancing and self-isolation is the most effective and practical way to slow the spread of the virus and increase best outcomes for medical systems. As the number of individuals testing positive for the virus increases, it becomes even more important that we adhere to strong sanitary practices of staying home, washing our hands and surfaces, and staying distant from those outside of our immediate social units. In addition, the Humboldt County Health Office has issued an order requiring the use of face coverings for anyone in an indoor facility, an enclosed space, or an outdoor space where social distancing of at least six feet is impractical. Remember, you are covering your face to protect others who are vulnerable and most at risk. A few teleconferencing items before we start. First and most importantly, if you're not actively speaking, please mute your microphone. The meeting will be difficult to hear if microphones are not muted, except for the individual speaking. Second, deliberations and questions will be conducted by roll call. The liaison will manage deliberations. Please raise your hand electronically using the teleconference function if you would like to speak. I may call roll for last comments. Third, all votes will be taken through a roll call vote. Please answer a or nay when your name is called. Last public comment is being accepted by email. The email address is PC@cityofarcada.org. PC is short for public comment. Emails are accepted for both specific agenda items and general comments. Comments on specific agenda items will be read by staff during that agenda item. The public can email additional public comments now and to be read and/or recorded as part of this meeting. And now we can call this meeting to order. Can we begin with the roll call, please? Chair Tagney?
Here.
Vice Chair Mayor?
Here.
Commissioner Visage Delcock?
Here.
Commissioner Figaro?
Yeah.
Commissioner Barstow? Commissioner White? And Commissioner Davies?
Here.
Thank you. And now we'll move on to oral communications. Mr. Loy, are there any communications received?
There are none.
Okay, we can move on to our consent calendar. And the only item on our consent calendar are the minutes from our last meeting of April 28, 2020. If there are no corrections, do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to approve in our second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. Loy, would you like to do the roll call? Yeah, sure. Commissioner Davies?
I approve. I.
Commissioner White?
Hi.
Commissioner Figaro?
Hi.
Commissioner Barstow?
Hi.
Commissioner Visage Delcock?
Hi.
And Vice Chair Mayor?
Hi.
And Chair Tagney?
Hi.
Motion carries. Let's see, at this point, we would move on to our public hearings, of which we have done this evening. And so we will move on to business items. And the first business item of the evening is the Strategic Infill Redevelopment Plan.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Tonight, I wanted to share with you the initial results that we're getting from the market study that we're conducting with AD, our contractor that was selected last year. The one component that we have for you here tonight is the the public engagement that we conducted. And so I wanted to walk you through sort of high level with that public engagement, what the outcomes were, and how we're planning to use this public engagement moving forward. This isn't the end of the public engagement, rather, it's the beginning of the public engagement that we'll be doing for the Strategic Infill Redevelopment Plan overall. Just to kind of set the stage and give you a understanding of where this document fits within the larger constellation of planning documents that we'll be developing for the Strategic Infill Redevelopment Plan. I wanted to go over what all of the, you know, what are the planning documents are, either the ones that we've already done that are part of this plan, this larger plan, or the ones that are here still in the future. So again, the Strategic Infill Redevelopment Plan is more a concept than a specific planning document. The concept is how do we target specifically the strategies that City of Arcata needs in order to meet its housing obligations to current and future residents, while still maintaining the values that are important to the city, its residents, and the decision makers? And so some of the documents that fall under this umbrella concept, we've been working on the housing element that was certified by the Housing Community Development Department, State HCD, last year, very end of the year. As part of that, and the housing element really lines out the housing policy and how we're going to meet our regional housing needs allocation, share of housing for the county. Part and parcel with that is the market study. The market study was intended to get down into real specific data, data that we can tie to answer these policy questions. We've long held narratives around our housing market, our economic market, and what's best for those various markets. We've long had paths for growth and development that are tied to policy decisions that are based on those narratives. And it's rare that we can take the opportunity to sit back and really delve into the meaty detail around what those markets are and how we should be planning for them. And so the objectives of this market study are, one, to really get a expanded community engagement. Instead of just holding, you know, public meetings at City Hall, we wanted to get out and do a much broader outreach. And that's part of what we'll talk about tonight. In addition, this market study was going to dig into, what do the market data tell us? What are the, what are the needs? You know, what are the gaps in our housing and our economic development? Strategies currently, the assets on the ground currently, and how do we fill those needs? And then finally, as part of this market study, there's a feasibility report aspect of it, trying to assess where our funds are best spent to, you know, to attract and draw the types of growth that we need to meet. And largely what that has resulted in is a analysis and comparison of different types of infill, what the cost versus benefit ratio, tax benefit ratio will be for different types of infill development versus greenfield development. You know, you recall from our last meeting, we looked at the area that's just west of town and the potential to expand our borders into that area and do subdivision out there as opposed to doing infill. And so the market study is really going to take a look at all of that. The next phase, once we've got the, you know, state mandated, state mandated housing element, and then we also have all of this robust information related to the market study, looking at community engagement, market data, and feasibility, we'll leverage that information, develop real specific policies to address what we're finding out in the community through our general plan amendments, and then to actually implement those in the field, targeted upzonings and specific, the specific area plan around the K Street corridor. So that's sort of the constellation of planning documents that we're working on have been for the past year and a half or so, and likely will be for about the next two years. This year is really the year where I see, you know, the Planning Commission and the City Council really getting involved and digesting the initial information that we've received from the public, that initial public outreach, and also starting to work on taking the ideas that folks have in the community and trying to turn that, those ideas into really well-vetted public policy. So our objective for tonight is to review and, you know, explore the direct community outreach that's been conducted to date. I've got a couple of high-level points that I want to orient you to in the document that's included in your packet. And really to start to lay out a plan for, you know, where we need to lead our public engagement into the future. What I do want to do, though, is caution us right at the beginning, and I'll circle back around to remind us at the end that what this, what this document does not do is lay out that policy for us. There may be a tendency to say, oh, that's a good idea, what that, you know, commenter said, or what that stakeholder group said. Let's do that. I'm going to really caution us as we enter, you know, the policy arena and trying to develop and craft this well-vetted policy, that we don't just seize on ideas and run with them, that we need to take those ideas and really understand how the interplay between, you know, existing development, existing build-out, and future build-out will accomplish those policy objectives. Now, this isn't to dismiss at all the information that we've received from the public, but it's to put into focus where that information is coming from. We've done a ton of surveys, a ton of, you know, one-on-one meetings, some stakeholder and focus group meetings that I'll describe to you. And each of those perspectives was really a personal perspective. It was through the lens of that individual that we were speaking with, and the challenges that they see and the solutions that they see. And so when we go into the policy arena, our challenge is going to be to take the higher-level view, encompass all of what we've heard from the community, and start to craft policy and plans that address to the best that we can, you know, all of those concerns. I just want to pause real quick. I'm, you know, and open it up to the Planning Commission. Are there any questions about, you know, the nature of the Strategic Infill Plan, or, you know, where we're going?
Any questions?
It looks like Judy has some thoughts.
Um, yeah. David, at the start, you said that the strategic infill planning process is more a project, a process than any specific document, but there are going to be several documents that come out of it. Is there going to be any overall overarching strategic infill development plan document that would precede any of those other documents that you mentioned? My understanding was that there would be, but now it's kind of sounding like there might not be.
The, I mean, I think that, you know, we can certainly, you know, create some, you know, some documents that help to outline what, I mean, I'm guessing a little bit at what you're angling towards, but if the, if the objective is to, you know, have a set of objectives that we want to make sure that all of these planning efforts achieve, then, you know, we can certainly do that. I don't think that I had ever anticipated that the the thing that we've been calling Strategic Infill Redevelopment Plan would actually result in a document itself called that. But that it's really, it's the compilation, the plan is the compilation of all these different efforts to accomplish that goal. But certainly, I'm, you know, that's something we're open to.
Yeah, I guess the reason that I'm asking that is that unless we actually do have a document like that, and the only overarching document we have is a nearly 20-year-old general plan. And so I, I'm, I would actually encourage putting together some kind of a summary document, especially one that would open to some public comments, rather than just rolling it out as, you know, a housing approach, a gateway approach, and the other things, because I think that if this is a sort of an integrated, comprehensive rethink of what we're doing about infill, it would be very helpful to actually be able to make some, some clear policy statements. Obviously, you know, it's subsidiary to the general plan, but I think it could also provide some really, really important guidance to updating portions of the general plan other than just the housing element.
Yeah, and I'm sorry for, you know, not being more clear earlier in the setup to this, that the general plan amendments will be pretty broad and widespread. I mean, our general plan, it is 20 years old now. It was originally entitled General Plan 2020. There are certain elements within general plans that are intended to be updated on a more frequent basis, and we've maintained those to the extent that, you know, were required to by law, or were able to outside of those requirements. But I do, I do see the policy recommendations that are generated through this planning process resulting in pretty widespread revisions to the general plan. And this new general plan would be our next 20-year planning document. So I think that's where, because ultimately, we need to have plans that are consistent with the general plan. And if you have a specific area plan that's incorporating all of this new thinking, but that new thinking isn't shown in your general plan, you know, we start to run into problems. And I also think that, you know, creating another document that is intended to supplant the intent of the general plan runs us into trouble. So I, I do think that, you know, maybe having a, you know, early stab at a policy document that, you know, outlines the objectives, you know, may be a good first step. But ultimately, all of those policy objectives need to be incorporated into the general plan. There's several general plan policies that are, you know, as useful and valuable, reflecting the community's values today as they were when they were first adopted. But I think we'll find as we go through it that several of them need to be updated. And in particular, you know, the area that, you know, I'm interested in making sure that we have a real strong equity lens through our general plan, and right now, you know, that's, that's absent. So I think that, you know, taking a close look at all of those different policy areas is going to be, you know, our task for this. Commissioner Davies?
Yeah, I was just wondering, with regards to the state mandates that you said would be at a certain point coming into this process, how disruptive do you expect that to be? Is that just going to be a dictation of sort of numbers? Or is it going to, in some way, sort of more fundamentally shift the planning work that's already underway here at the city level?
Yeah, no, that's a really good question. The state law has been steadily marching towards less and less local control if those local policies don't result in the outcomes that the state is looking for. And so the state sets its regional housing needs allocations for the jurisdictions. And the jurisdictions historically have been required to show that there's enough land to support, you know, that allocation of housing units. But now the state's implemented several different rules that would actually take local control away in the permitting process. And so instead of a project coming to the Planning Commission for either design review, or maybe a use permit, or some other discretionary action, the state has said, if you're not meeting those objectives at, you know, points one quarter of the way through, halfway through, and three quarters of the way through, then you're going to lose some of your, your control. And in particular, you know, projects to have, you know, affordable housing component to them in particular would be approvable ministerially by right, without any consideration from, from the jurisdiction. So one of the things we're trying to do with this planning process is get ahead of that and make sure that we can accommodate both state objectives for, you know, for housing in particular, but also, you know, design it the way that, you know, our cadence wants to see it designed. And design it in a way that, you know, embraces, you know, the policy objectives of the state reflected in the way that Arcade wants to see them reflected. Commissioner Barstow has his hand up.
Yeah, this question could have waited to the end of the discussion, but I'll ask it now, and maybe David can kind of answer the question as you go along. And the question is, amongst the findings in the market study, did anything surprise you? Was there anything that went in a different direction than what you would have expected?
That's a really good question, too. I really, you know, went in without many expectations, I guess. I, in a lot of ways, I think we got out of the market study what, you know, what, what you would expect when you go and ask a broad spectrum of people their opinion on almost any topic, is we got almost every single answer that you could ask for. And we'll, we'll go over those. I guess the one thing that was a little interesting to me is that, and maybe not completely unsurprising because of the conversations that I've had with people over the past year and a half, but there was a lot more broad support for the type of housing that we're talking about, you know, in these, you know, high-density infill opportunities that we have in the city than I really anticipated. You know, and there's still, I mean, you know, it's not a one-for-one. You know, there's about equal percentages, if you look at the, the data that we have in this document, equal percentage of people that want to, you know, live in a single-family home as there are that would accept living in more of a mixed-use setting. Many people said if they couldn't live in a single-family home, they would accept an apartment, and then their third choice would be a mixed-use. And I think at the end of the day, you know, hypotheticals are one thing, but the reality of the situation is we're, we're not in a situation to produce a whole bunch of new single-family housing stock. We just don't have a land base to do that, without radically shifting policies that we've held and values that we've held, you know, around trying to maintain our borders and preserve the agricultural lands and the forest lands that are, you know, to the west and east of us. We just are not going to be able to provide that, at least in new housing stock. So I guess, long, long answer, sorry. The, the thing that surprised me a little was how much support there was for, you know, for that infill housing. Many people, I think, come to this, you know, the North Coast to be in the wide-open spaces. They're looking for land. They're not looking for, you know, apartments or, or high-density development. But that's what we have to offer. Can I run you just high-level through the, the document itself? And then I really want to pause at the various sections and see if there's questions or discussions around those various sections.
Yeah, so David, you're suggesting that we wait and tell you pause before asking questions?
When I start sharing my screen, I'm not going to be able to see you. You could either just jump in, but I'll, I'll pause frequently.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner White has her hand raised.
I'm, just a quick question. I just wanted to clarify, there has been a very robust engagement already. Is that to say that we're not going to necessarily revisit or continue community engagement? Is it over for the most part, or will there be some ongoing?
No, it's not over at all. Certainly, there's, the, the Planning Commission and City Council meetings will be an opportunity for folks to engage directly with the decision-makers. But we also intend to have more outreach, you know, outside of the more formal forum. Right now, because of the, you know, the shelter-in-place order, depending on how long that goes on, I don't know what that engagement will look like. And so we're, we're trying to, we're trying to sort that out right now. We're actually, Jennifer Dart, our deputy director, has been in contact with the Institute of Local Governments Boost Program folks that we've been working with to talk about what are, what are other jurisdictions doing? You know, how, how do we have good engagement? So, long story short, yeah, I think we're going to have more engagement. I just don't know what it's going to look like at this point.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to share the report. And again, you know, just feel free to jump in. I can't see you all in my, my field of view now. So this, again, just the, in the context where this, this document fits in, we are having a market study conducted that includes three main elements. And they are, you know, some community engagement, feasibility study, and then market analysis. One of the outcomes from this work is to produce a infographic that can identify key metrics that will help us to keep track of how well we're doing at meeting, you know, these objectives that we identify through, through this work. And so an example of that is, you know, we'll likely have vacancy as a metric that we report on in real time, as real time as we can possibly make it, so that we can help to communicate both to ourselves and to the community, you know, how tight is the housing market in, in Arcade? You know, vacancy rates are low, housing, the housing market is tight. Vacancy rates are high, then, you know, there's, there's more to go around. So this is one element of that market study, though, is the community engagement report. Just jumping to a couple of the different sections, wanted to identify the work that's done today. So on page eight of the packet, it's actually page one of the, the document itself, but on packet page eight, you'll see an outline of the outreach that we've done. This was, you know, something that, you know, I think our staff, the community development staff, are really proud of being able to put as much effort into this outreach as we did. The elements of this included a survey. There was a paper survey and an electronic survey that was broadly distributed. If you look at the housing survey at community events section, you can see that, you know, throughout August and into September, approximately a month, we did a number of different table events where we asked people to take our survey. It was available in Spanish and English, and we had about 900 responses to those surveys. In addition, our consultant, Heather Equinasse, who produced this work, had focus groups for different entities that were engaged in different sectors of the housing market. So for example, you know, we had a Latinx families focus group. We had a focus group that was really centered on, on homeless, homeless issues, homelessness, and resolving that. We had a senior component. And so a couple of different focus groups where you could sit down with a small group and really, you know, talk to them about, you know, what their impressions of that demographic as a whole, what their needs would be. And then we rounded that out towards the end of September with a community workshop that was, you know, broadly advertised and pretty well participated. We had about 50, 50-plus members from the public. And we would like to do that kind of event again. We replicated that event in a Spanish, sort of simultaneous translation meeting at the community center, the Courtyard Apartments. That was fairly well-attended, too. We had about 30 people there, representing about 10 or 15 families, I believe. So those were both well-attended, and we got lots of feedback from both of those. I can point to you the materials that we used in those towards the end here. But, you know, this was pretty, pretty broad outreach. We were doing events. you know, this was pretty, pretty broad outreach. We were doing events in, uh, Eureka and McKinleyville, uh, in Arcata. Uh, we did them on HSU's campus, uh, and the idea being that if we just hold a public hearing, um, and we hold that in city, city hall, and we ask the people who show up to that public hearing, what do they think about housing in Arcata? The demographic we're going to get to that hearing are likely to be people who are fairly well off, who can take the time out, uh, in the evening on a weekday to come to a public meeting, uh, at city hall. Many of the folks that we outreach to, we would have never seen at this kind of public hearing. And so we broadened, uh, our, our search pattern and we got a lot more feedback than we would have otherwise gotten. Um, and I believe as a result, uh, the work that we're doing will reflect, uh, a broader spectrum of the community as opposed to the more narrowly focused, uh, public comment that we might otherwise obtain. And so our, our staff are really, uh, you know, proud of this work. Uh, you can see in that, in community, uh, engagement summary, uh, 911 people completed the survey uh, online. We had several other, uh, surveys that were completed, uh, in paper. And, uh, the next section is really a quick, uh, summary of all of the data that was compiled. Um, I'll jump just real quick to the, uh, housing survey results. Uh, this is somewhere, uh, part of the, the, uh, document that the planning commissioner want to focus on. Uh, before we move on, I just want to check in and make sure there, uh, there are any questions about the community engagement overview. And at this point, I can't see all of you, so feel free to just jump in. Okay, uh, the one thing I did want to point out, I did have one commissioner reach out and, uh, they were scratching their head about, you know, you know, the numbers aren't adding up, you know, some of these tables will say like, for instance, you know, uh, this demographic has, uh, 40% in this category and 20% in that category. Well, that doesn't act equal 100%. Uh, there are a couple of things going on here that I wanted to point out to you. Number one, um, some of the categories have more than just two, uh, sectors. So the total wouldn't will add to 100% in more than just two categories. Uh, but the other thing that's going on is that not everybody, uh, answered the entire survey. So only 82% completed the entire survey of, out of the 911 people. And so some of the, some of the answers are, are only represent a partial, uh, answer is another thing that's going on. There may be other data inconsistencies as well, though, um, and I would encourage the planning commission to, you know, if you see something, let's, let's point that out and talk about it. There may be an issue with the data analysis, or it may be something that we can resolve just by looking at some of the figures. Uh, the other thing I wanted to point out to you on this page, uh, this is a narrative that we, uh, have told many times, uh, to ourselves. Uh, and now the community is also reflecting that narrative back to us. The primary reason why people don't live in Arcata that we spoke with is that they can't find affordable housing in Arcata. And so, um, you know, that is one, uh, primary policy objective, I believe, that we should maybe focus on. Making sure that there's housing that's affordable to all demographics, uh, regardless of income level. Uh, I'm going to jump down to, uh, the top five factors, uh, that participants were asked, uh, when choosing a place to live. Now, obviously there's more than five here. It's, uh, ranked in order of, uh, highest, uh, not ranked in order of top five. Uh, but again, cost, uh, feeling safe and welcoming, a walkable, bikeable neighborhood, low crime rate, uh, close to work. I can't answer to that, uh, but I can tell you that those first four, um, when I read those, I read Arcata. Uh, I think Arcata offers those first four. And so these were just to, you know, to my mind, these were interesting tables, and I don't know if anybody had questions about, uh, these tables. Uh, another, uh, sort of interesting question that was asked was, uh, why they wanted to live in a single family home? Um, or I'm sorry, the majority of participants said they wanted to live in a single family home. Uh, apartment was next, and then mixed use apartment was third. Uh, one of the conversations that we've had in the past about this is that, um, we may not be able to produce a lot of new single family housing stock. Uh, but it may be that if the market was for, uh, you know, condos, townhomes, you know, what the mixed use infill uh, development can provide, can offer, uh, we may be able to shift the single family home away from, uh, you know, what is largely rental based at this time and move that into, uh, you know, more appropriate housing types for that demographic, which would then free up some single fa- family housing stock. Uh, this, this connection is something that I'm really interested in developing, uh, a metric about and including in our infographics uh, that we can share with the community.
Uh, David, I find it intriguing that, uh, campground is more attractive than school run dorms.
Agreed. Yeah, it's a surprising number of students who actually, um, you know, live in, uh, in camping situations. You know, the, the there's a, you know, considerable, uh, demographic of students that, uh, come here that are from very low income families and you know, do find the rents, uh, over burdensome in Arcata. Are there any questions about this section from anyone?
I had a question and I don't know if it's necessarily relevant to, well, I'm wondering if people sometimes coincide, single family home with ownership and if we were to open up planned unit developments, condominiums and townhouses where people can own, if that would change, um, that ideal. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that, that's definitely something to tease apart. I mean, I think that, you know, what I've heard the majority of people say is whether they own or whether they rent, they want the single family home lifestyle. In fact, uh, two years ago, when I first started talking about this plan with people, almost universally, people would shut me down and say, no one will ever want to live in, um, mixed use housing, uh, situation. And, you know, that perspective seems to have changed, uh, over time. Uh, I do think that there are more people who would find that attractive or more people who would settle for that, you know, as the case may be. And I definitely think that an ownership element to this mixed use, uh, uh, housing type is going to be important. I mean, one of the things that, um, you know, that strikes me about the opportunities we have, uh, in the downtown or, you know, larger stature buildings, uh, four and five story buildings is that those upper floors would have spectacular views of the bay or, you know, the forested hillside or the bottomlands around you. It wouldn't be like living in, uh, you know, a dense, uh, area of Sacramento where maybe you look across or New York, where you look out your window and you see just another building and that's all anybody sees. So, you know, it, it could provide for some, you know, pretty, uh, intriguing housing types, uh, for sure. Uh, but I think the majority of people who ma- made that comment are, are really just looking for the single family, uh, housing style. A lot of what we got out of students was, you know, yeah, they'd like to live in the dorms, um, you know, when they start at HSU, uh, and then eventually they'd like to move out of the dorms, uh, and a lot of those folks like to live in, uh, you know, mixed, uh, you know, mixed housing settings with, uh, with their friends and, and, uh, single family housing stock.
Yeah, um, David, this is, um, uh, another kind of data question. Um, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, and I, I realize I'm kind of a data nerd, but one of the things that I kept looking for and would, would love to see in terms of how the data are aggregated and disaggregated would be on some of those, um, preferences to really see an age breakdown. Um, so for example, you know, when, when we see a, a 20 year old or a 22 year old student who wants to live in a single family house um, and is frustrated because they can't afford to own one, you know, that, that sort of tells me we, we need to disaggregate the data a little bit differently. We don't, we don't really expect a 20 year old student to be able to, um, live in that self-owned dream house in Arcata while they're a student. Um, and so being able to break down those, those data in a way that allows us to, to tease that ideal versus, um, you know, realistically achieved situation would be super helpful. And would also, I think in a market study, provide a more realistic sense of, um, who can realistically afford to live in what kinds of housing, um? You, you know, if, if, if we're trying to provide affordable housing for, um, 18 to 24 year olds, that's a really different thing than trying to provide affordable housing for, um, you know, a, a family with two children, um, where, you know, the parents are in their 40s.
That's, that's a really good point, and I think that's something that our, um, consultant can do for us. Uh, I think that when, when I look at the data, uh, figure 14, for example, on, uh, packet page 17 here, uh, you know, it is slightly skewed, uh, towards, uh, younger demographic. Uh, the 18 to 24 year group appears, uh, an aggregate to be a larger, uh, number. Uh, this was one of the things I found myself wondering too, though, is that what are the, you know, what are the total numbers of people? But, um, you know, there's a, a decline here. Um, and then if you look at the current housing situation, uh, the majority of folks, uh, you know, renters and homeowners. Um, so I, I think that those, uh, those questions would be really relevant to break down into those age demographics. In particular, if you look at this, uh, this last one where, you know, people said, hey, I, I want to own my own home, something that many people aspire to. And when they were asked what, uh, you know, what price range is affordable to you? You know, the majority of people, vast majority of people, uh, picked a price range that's well below, you know, I would say median house price is maybe 350, uh, in Arcata or somewhere in this, uh, upper bracket. And so of those respondents who said they wanted to live in a single family home, but aren't being able to find one that they can afford, I, I don't know how much this work we're doing is going to affect that median house price, uh, initially. I mean, I think it's going to be more of a, a long, long-term, um, uh, solution. And I, I think the majority of the new housing stock that will be uh, built is going to, the majority of it's probably going to be a rental, rental opportunity, uh, which again, you know, may free up some, you know, some purchase opportunity, but they're, they're not going to be, uh, you know, one for one. So I, I think that's a really good point. I'll ask our, uh, I'll, I'll ask our consultant to update based on, some of these based on age.
Yeah, I, I think age and also, um, student status and senior, and senior status. Um, you know, the age breakdown would get at the senior thing. Um, but, but since they did collect the student status stuff in the same data set, I think that would be extremely helpful. Um, and of course, HSU and CR are also collecting their own data. And some of it may jive with this and some of it might not necessarily jive with it. That would, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, I can certainly do that. Any other thoughts or questions or comments about this section?
Yeah, a little follow up on that. I'm thinking back over the years I've been on the commission and I don't know of any housing projects that have come through that were intended for sale. It seems like nearly everything is designed for rent these days. Um, and I, I see the market forces, it makes sense. Um, and I get that as we go towards multi-family, uh, structures, there might still be a tendency to go towards rentals. However, the question here is, um, does it fit any planning guidelines, uh, direction that we might consider that some projects be um, built out specifically for sale? And I'm thinking about, um, the residents of Arcade, uh, built able, ability to build equity, have skin in the game in the community rather than, uh, be kind of stuck in the rental cycle for perhaps, you know, their whole career or their time here in Arcata.
Yeah, and I, I think that's a good point, too. Um, we certainly want to encourage that. Um, I, I think part of the, you know, the feasibility analysis will hopefully, uh, tease some of that out. Um, and I, I guess this really speaks to one of the reasons why I wanted to have a more data-driven discussion uh, around what our hu- housing policy should be. This, this is a perfect example. I mean, I think we all want more ownership opportunities and there's certainly a model out there for, uh, you know, mixed use, multi-family, for sale uh, structures. Um, you know, it would be an airspace subdivision and, uh, each of those, you know, there'd be, you know, common areas, uh, homeowners association. All of that stuff could be built into a, a project. But that does increase the cost of the project to do the airspace subdivision. And so really, you know, one of the questions that I think I'd like to answer, uh, in, you know, this, in this, uh, planning process is what are those, um, you know, feasible and desirable, uh, outcomes? And what do we need to do to get them? What I don't want to do is create an aspirational document that, you know, we all feel really good about, uh, and would love to see it come to fruition. But the market just won't support it. The market just won't bear it. And so I think ownership opportunity is really important, and if it's feasible and can be, uh, achieved, then we should definitely incentivize it. If it's not feasible and it can't be achieved, given our market, then incentivizing it may make us feel good, but it doesn't do anything to, you know, create that housing type. Kimberly, I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner White?
Yeah, um, I just, on that same line, um, with regards to feasibility, what comes to mind was the Sandpiper, um, planned unit development, if I'm not mistaken. Was that driven, uh, wasn't that a city of Arcata, uh, project or no?
We, we did, uh, participate financially in the project and made loans to Resident Home Parks, the developer of the project. So, so yeah, it was, uh, you know, the affordability associated with that was really driven by, uh, the city's financial participation.
So I'm wondering in what, um, if that might be something that we could possibly, um, look at, at a later stage about making more opportunities where they are collaborating with the city of Arcata for, um, first time home buyer loans and also offering incentives to builders to bring these projects to the area, which would not necessarily address the single family home, um, desire, but would address homeownership, which might change things for people who originally thought that they really, um, wanted the single family home.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that, you know, we're going to have to have a lot of different, uh, uh, arrows in the quiver. And I, I think that, you know, those kinds of programs are, uh, you know, are part of it. I also think that, you know, we're going to need to do something that, you know, what I would consider inclusionary zoning light, uh, if you will, inclusionary Inclusionary zoning requires developers to provide affordable housing, uh, once they get above a certain density. Um, I think that we can incentivize developers to provide that affordable housing. Um, and then with a mixed uh, you know, mixed-use project, a high-density project, what that would translate into is not only a mixed-use project, but a mixed-income project. Um, you know, somewhat reducing the, you know, potential for stigma uh, on a, a project that's a hundred percent affordable. The, the funding mechanisms are a lot more complex uh, for a mixed-income project. Um, so again, you know, there's, there's a feasibility, you know, we, we may have lots of desires in the community to have mixed-income projects. But the question is, are they feasible? And we'll need to evaluate that and how we can participate. You know, can we develop new programs to, you know, participate financially in those mixed-income projects?
So the project that's next to the North Coast Co-op, is that one of those examples where they have mixed income?
No, that's a, Plaza Point is a hundred percent uh, low-income senior housing project uh, that we also participated in. Really proud about that one.
Okay, David. David, um, I noticed that on this um, form that there's a really um, pretty equal renter versus um, homeownership. Um, I'm just curious, what is a healthy ratio for a community? Do you know?
Um, yeah, that that's a, a very interesting question. The, you know, the, these percentages reflect the percentage of respondents. They absolutely do not reflect the the uh, percentage of o- ownership in Arcata, and so we gotta keep those two things separated. And, and then I think that, you know, the, it's a really complex question because it really depends on, uh, you know, the nature of the jurisdiction that you're looking at. What I can tell you is that Arcata is uh, Arcata's homeownership rate is regionally, statewide, and nationally low, extremely low, uh, in terms of its ownership portion. We've historically had around thirty-three percent, thirty, the low thirty percents uh, in ownership. Uh, nationwide, it's more like sixty to sixty-five percent. Uh, and statewide, it's around fifty percent.
Um, one thing, if I could uh, just put a word in, Arcata's ownership and rental ratio um, is very, very typical for small college towns. And it, it um, it affects more or less what one would expect um, in the type of community with the type of economic base that we have.
I've actually looked at those data and I, I can provide that uh, at a, a later planning commission meeting. Um, but I couldn't find any relationship. I, I looked at uh, cities that had a CS within the CSU system. Um, I looked at cities within the UC system, and then I looked at them uh, together as well. And, you know, I know this isn't the most scientific or uh, statistically appropriate approach, but you know, just looking for patterns, um, I looked, I tried to look for correlations. Um, I also broke them down by uh, you know, po- population size. And there really is no correlation, so I'm not sure that, um, you know, not, not to contradict your statement, I'm not sure that there's actually data to support that. But I, I, I have heard many people say that. I just haven't seen uh, anything that supports that. I do think that there's a uh, very individualized approach uh, to uh, to housing in different jurisdictions. Income has a lot to do with the correlations in, in uh, homeownership, and that's not surprising in these different jurisdictions, but uh, but I think that, you know, one of the things that, you know, we would need to look at is uh, you know, I think maybe a better metric than what is the percentage of homeownership? Uh, because that's also very closely tied to what your total housing stock is and how much of that housing stock is in uh, multifamily. I think probably a better metric would be uh, something that evaluates what proportion of our single-family housing stock is in the rental market. Um, and we have some proxies for doing that. Many jurisdictions that have lower uh, uh, homeownership rates also have lower proportion of their housing stock in single-family market. And those towns have basically made the specific targeted policy decision to provide enough multifamily housing for their student population. Um, and as a result, their homeownership rate is lower. But instead of having that just be an artifact of the fact that housing production didn't match demand and therefore the housing stock in general, whether it was intended to be uh, for rent or not, converted to for rent and therefore your housing uh, proportion is low. You know, they, they made the in purposeful decision to uh, to build that housing type that they knew they were gonna need because they had a college town. So I think those are, those are the kinds of things that we need to, you know, take a look at when we're developing policy. You know, and, and dig in a little deeper than um, just, you know, what are the percentages? Why are the percentages, I guess, is the question we need to ask? Um, let's see, the next, next section is uh, you know, starts to look at the, the focus group input. As I mentioned, we'd uh, reached out to a number of different uh, focus groups. The housing advocates uh, for, you know, homeless folks and uh, folks that were, uh, you know, um, you know, on the low, low-income end of the spectrum was one of the uh, focus groups. Um, and as I mentioned, seniors, I'm not gonna go through this section in detail, but I would encourage you to read it. Basically, what these uh, focus groups did was, you know, they resulted in some recommendations. Uh, so for, for instance, here, the housing advocates for uh, homeless individuals and low-income folks. You know, they said, hey, look, we need low-barrier housing. You know, we need uh, you know, design that's appropriate for the demographic. Uh, this was from the senior group. Uh, folks that were concerned about uh, barriers to uh, homeless people getting into housing had you know, some low-threshold housing requirements. Uh, there was a lot of discussion in these groups about racial bias. Uh, many narratives from individuals who had personally experienced uh, racism in housing. Uh, and I, this is not restricted, these, these narratives, these uh, stories that I've heard are not restricted to, uh, you know, students. I've heard them from professionals. I've heard them from folks who had, you know, very uh, you know, solid jobs that they couldn't get a um, you know, an interview once the uh, housing provider found out the, the color of their skin. So I think that's an important thing that we need to work on in our policy. Many people were frustrated. This is both among the housing population, and we heard this a lot from the Latinx community that uh, there were lots of application fees that essentially led nowhere. Um, and so some uh, fair, a little bit of fairness in, in the application process, you know, don't collect a, a fee from me if you're not actually going to work, walk me through the process. So this is the summary. Um, again, I'd like you to, you know, read through these and, you know, if you have comments now, certainly uh, now is a good time to talk about them, or if you wanted to digest this and come back uh, another time and, and get into it in a little more detail, uh, we can do that as well. Uh, but this is an area where, you know, again, these reflect the perspectives, you know, of these individual focus groups. Um, and I think we need to take this into consideration when developing the policy uh, and be cautious of just latching on to these recommendations as policy. This was actually kind of a fun section. We uh, you know, we had this outreach to artists and folks that lived in the Creamery District. Uh, we had outreach to folks who are advocates for, you know, turn in transportation, kind of try to hit the, the full gambit. I gave you a little teaser of some of the data that came out of our community workshop when we uh, met last time. But I wanted to uh, you know, draw your attention to this. Um, this community workshop, uh, we have held two of them, one in English, one in Spanish. Um, and we walked them both through, in both cases, we walked through uh, the same material and asked folks to tell us, you know, in the future, what, you know, what do you think how, the housing should look like in Arcata? Um, one of the exercises that was particularly interesting, and I'd like you to walk through this uh, in more detail. Uh, you know, in your spare time, and, and then we can again, come back and talk about it and talk about how can we use this in the future to you know, try and resolve uh, policy conflicts, uh, was this polarity mapping. Um, essentially what we did in this, uh, in these group meetings was to take a small group, you know, table of folks that, you know, just randomly sat next to each other, uh, so different perspectives. And we asked them to, you know, to sit in each other's shoes, to, you know, try and make pro and con arguments. Uh, for example, uh, if we were to have uh, you know, no growth versus uh, you know, growth that is projected. Looking at both the upsides and the downsides of each of those different policy positions. And then asked folks to list, you know, in a certain timeframe, as many ideas as they could for upsides and downsides. And through this polar, polarity mapping process, instead of making it uh, you know, personal attacks or, you know, threats to, you know, what's happening in my backyard. Um, this was a, a time for the community to come and express their, you know, their fears and, and hopes. And try and look for ways to, you know, bridge the gap between those fears and hopes. And understand that, you know, if you have uh, you know, very extreme positions in any particular direction, um, you know, there likely to be, you know, negative consequences. And so it's, it's a really interesting way of bringing uh, folks together that have uh, very uh, different ideas and views and have them get into a, a, you know, productive conversation about solutions uh, for how to, how to address those uh, those fears. And so um, you know, you, you can walk through these, uh, you know, on your own, but are there any questions or comments about these polarity mappings?
I had a question. So these polarity maps were a result of these meetings, and I know that the information has been made available, but I guess I'm wondering is would it be useful then to re-meet with the, the specific focus groups that actually did the work that resulted in these polarity maps? To see if there was any kind of change?
Um, that would be really interesting. These ones were actually done at our open workshops, uh, more of our town hall meetings, and so uh, we could certainly invite the folks to come back, um, but we don't have direct access to them. They, they weren't parts of the focus groups. But I think that, you know, what we can learn from this polarity mapping is, you know, in particular is, you know, what are the community fears around, you know, you know, these different uh, alternatives? Um, and, you know, how do we address policy that tries to address, you know, those fears that really conflict with, um, you know, with the productive community? Um, so that was an interesting exercise. I'd encourage you to uh, look through that. Uh, whoops, sorry. Um, I'm not gonna go through all of these pages, but I, I do want to uh, you know, just point out a couple of the uh, results and orient you to, uh, you know, how, how we achieve these uh, answers. And so, for example, um, uh, we, you know, shared these materials uh, with folks so that we didn't have to ask, you know, hey, what's your income? Um, and, and tell us, you know, uh, where you find it affordable. We gave them the information on, you know, what our programs consider, our housing programs consider affordable. We gave them in, in information on, you know, what those income brackets are and what people would be expected to pay according to their annual incomes uh, in order to be considered paying what's affordable. So affordable housing doesn't mean just that we're providing housing for extremely low-income individuals. It could mean that you're a moderate-income family of three earning sixty-four thousand dollars a year. We would expect you to be able to pay seventeen hundred dollars a month uh, on your mortgage or your rent. Uh, so that, that allowed people to kind of understand, you know, what, what do we mean by affordable housing? We talked about accessory dwelling units, uh, and explored those as ideas. Uh, we collected data like this using uh, you know, green tab, red tab, you, you place a dot uh, where your concern is. And uh, you know, interestingly, around eighty U's, uh, some people said, look, I don't, you know, I don't want a renter living at, at my house, so I'm not interested in eighty U's. Many people were interested but found the building regulations too confusing. This is, you know, this is easy. Uh, you know, we can, we can fix this, you know, so this is some great information, you know, we can make the, the process a little easier to understand. Um, you know, I don't have the cash to do it, and I'm not sure I could get financing. So this tells us where if, as a community, we said, hey, we really wanna focus on accessory dwelling units because we can have a very large impact on the uh, quantity of housing and a fairly small impact on uh, the character, the, the design considerations in existing neighborhoods. Then, you know, we need to focus on how to get uh, financing, get people plugged in with a simple design uh, review process, a building uh, permit process. So we got some good outcome, uh, good information out of these. Talked about tiny homes. Uh, here was an interesting uh, exercise that we walked folks through. We had, you know, a whole bunch of different questions that we asked them, you know, should we allow for denser development in residential zones? You know, this is to address our housing needs. Should we encourage these multi-story apartments near the downtown? Uh, encourage multi-use development in and around commercial areas, build accessory dwelling units, uh, annex land outside of the city? And you can see from, uh, you know, sort of the heat map, the concentration of folks that, and they could vote anywhere along the spectrum. You know, you could be lukewarm, uh, kind of lukewarm, whatever the analogy is for that, analogous phrases for that. Uh, you know, ice cold or hot on this topic. And uh, you know, you can, it's nice, we didn't get a whole lot of lukewarm. Uh, we got people who were very interested, and the majority of people uh, were interested in, you know, these uh, infill opportunities. And so this was an interesting outcome uh, of the particular workshops. People do support these ideas that were, uh, that we've been talking about, people in the community. Oh, and by the way, this uh, is aggregated data, so this includes both the English and the Spanish workshops, uh, the, the data from those. Uh, these were some things that were important to people. Uh, one of the exercises we start out with um, was what do you love about Arcata? We started the meeting with this question because um, we, we started with two, two, two primary questions. Um, and it was really telling. Uh, the first was, you know, how many folks are, you know, from Arcata originally? You know, were born and raised here. Uh, and like with most uh, groups, uh, it was a fairly small proportion uh, in, in each of the different meetings. Uh, and then we asked, you know, how many of you came here due to HSU? And, you know, several folks in the, in that meeting, not as many as uh, in, in several groups that I'm in, uh, actually came here for HSU. And I think those are important questions to ask to remind ourselves that, you know, many of us came from out of the area. That, you know, the question is to when do I become an Arcaden? When, when do I get to, you know, claim myself as a member of this community? Um, you know, is that day one? Do you have to live here for ten years? Do you have to own property before you're a community member? Um, I think those are important for us to reflect on when we're thinking about uh, you know, process uh, that's intended to provide, you know, housing and economic opportunity, uh, you know, for our community, especially as it grows. Many of the people who will live here in the future don't live here now. And then, you know, lastly, what do you love about Arcata? Just remind, everybody is choosing to be here. The folks that want to live in Arcata, they love Arcata. The folks that actually are lucky enough to live here, uh, you know, that's, that's a great thing, and, and, you know, can we share that with folks that don't currently live here? Uh, there's a bunch of demographic data. Um, and, you know, some information that supported some of our policy direction already existing in the And, you know, some information that supported some of our policy direction already existing in the, in the housing element. And then we challenged people to come up with some, you know, some ideas, big and small. This was an interesting exercise. We asked people to, in red or green, tell us where, where should we densify? If we were going to densify, where should we do it? And I know this is probably the wrong format to get into this kind of detail, but again, it really supported some of these infill ideas that we've been talking about, you know, people are interested in concentrating in and around the downtown. They wanted to see growth in the Valley, West Valley East area. Some folks saw some opportunities in what's currently ag lands, you know, that's lots of wide open space. And then, you know, a little bit of a concentration on, it looks like south of Samoa. Some areas that are, you know, currently under, underdeveloped. And pretty much universally, folks said they didn't want to, you know, expand into the bottom lands. These were people coming with very diverse perspectives. And, you know, the one thing that it appears everyone that we talked to agreed on was annexing into the bottom lands isn't consistent with our current values. This is the Spanish workshop segregated data. I'll have to double check on my statement earlier. I thought we had aggregated the data. So I'll verify that for you. I don't know that, that we need to disaggregate these data. This was an interesting result here. Folks did want to encourage multi-story apartments near the downtown, but they were, wanted to discourage mixed-use development in commercial areas. So, did you have any other, you know, questions or perspectives, you know, coming out of the work that you did?
David, is that a question of the commission?
It is. Yeah. If you're, if there are topics that you wanted to delve into, things about the report that you wanted to explore. I just kind of gave you a broad brush of the things that were interesting to me and want to open it up and make sure that folks cover the items that are interesting to them.
This is Christian. I thought it's very interesting, you know, the revolving theme, you know, amongst the community members is, is identifying the need for community cohesion. But then, you know, to create that cohesion is, you know, the, the two, the two major ones is just cost and affordability. It's a reoccurring theme throughout, you know, throughout the whole entire document. And how can we develop policy that can ensure those that are disadvantaged or can't afford? You know, these, you know, essentially this sort of living environment to have, to have cohesion, to have diversity within our community. So I thought that was a really interesting theme. That's very reoccurring within this, within this document.
David, are we just about to the end of this topic? Is this our, our last chance to comment on this one?
Yeah, I feel like I've presented the material. You now have that. If you have questions or further discussions.
I, I would just like to say that I super appreciate that this is occurring in the community outreach. And then correlating the data so that we come up with some direction. It feels to me from some of the more difficult planning projects that have come through that we've had a lot of real reaction to from neighbors. That what we need as a commission is a little more of a feeling that, look, the community has spoken. This is a direction, you know, we're all in this together, or the general plan supports it. And this whole topic of infill is, feels like it's such a, the elephant in the room in the last few years around the planning commission. And some of these big projects that we've said, you know, yes and no to. So I really appreciate that this is occurring, that it's going to be something in our quiver to respond to people, you know, or, or to guide us as we interpret these projects and deal with neighbor pushback and, you know, not in my backyard or shading issues and all the different variety of things that come up. So I will, you know, I, I look, I, I'm also reflecting here on Judas' question earlier about where does this go? Does this turn into a chapter in the general plan specifically about infill? And David, I did get your answer on that, that it, you know, it can't disrupt the general plan, but you know, I, I don't know, I really appreciate that we, from these studies are getting some guidance as a community towards interpreting the planning questions that we're all scratching our heads about.
I, I really appreciate that you've tried to match up some of the demographic work with a lot of opinions and some kind of more touchy feely aspect of questions that can become divisive or unifying in a process. Kind of an interesting bit of timing here on this. It is, is I think maybe something that's going to help in the future with interpreting all this stuff. You know, first is that as far as the demographics themselves go, we're going to have assistance from the 2020 census very quickly. In a way that we, we might not really have. And so we'll be able to focus more on the opinion stuff here and not have to necessarily depend on a sort of biased sample survey for the demographics. And, and so that can be a really useful thing. The other thing, timing wise, is that so many of our housing programs have really depended on assistance from things like block grants and projects that would leverage federal and state funding. And I think with the budget situation that we're looking towards in the wake of COVID. It's going to be really important to be creative about figuring out what Arcata can do with the realistic funding sources that we'll have access to. But then at the same time to realize that if we're thinking in terms of projects that we're hoping will leverage funding from outside. That, that, that that money is going to be pretty competitive to get. And so just the, 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 the real, the real timing of all of this is just something that I think no one could have anticipated back in September, when the community outreach year was, was happening. So it's, it's, it's really, really useful to have these documents from that time going forward.
Commissioner White?
I just wanted to clarify, when Chair Tagney had asked if this was our last opportunity. He was referring to tonight's meeting, correct? Because we will have more time to further digest and have more questions and comments as this, as we proceed.
Absolutely. Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's correct. Just for tonight's agenda.
So are there any other commission comments or questions on this before we move on? David, do you see any raised hands?
No, I don't. Let me check for public comment. I see none.
All right, David, do you have any final thoughts or shall we move on?
No, don't, don't get me started.
All right. We've heard enough. Thank you very much for that. And so our second business item of the evening is in reference to the joint city council and planning commission study session and what items we might want to discuss and bring forward to that. David, do you have a staff report or something, or are we just going to go over the list that's been provided?
Yeah, I think you, I think you should just have sort of a round robin. I'll orient you real quick. I gave you the planning commission annual report from last year that you just provided to the city council. I gave you the city council 2020 priority goals, 2019, 2020 priority goals, the February update of them. So you can see where we're at in meeting those goals. And I, I just, you know, really want you to focus in as a commission and have the opportunity that oftentimes we, you know, the planning commission study session comes up and you know, staff just sets the agenda based on what, what we've been talking about. And I wanted to make sure that you had an opportunity to weigh in on that. I am honestly not positive that, what the format will be or when we'll have the, the study session. But I think it's a worthwhile discussion, even if it's not in late June as it usually is.
And David, can you, can you remind us? You know, if as a commission, we started to zero in on a few of these items. Does that get forwarded then to the city council and they make a decision which items are going to be agendized for that evening? Or how does this work?
Yeah, generally the, the city council, I mean, it's, it really is, it's the city council's meeting. So it's up to the mayor to decide. You know, how to set that agenda, agenda. But traditionally, the mayor has taken the agenda items that, you know, staff has recommended. And so, you know, I'm sure they'll, the mayor will be doubly pleased to do so if the planning commission has said, hey, this is what we want to talk with you about.
Okay. Any commission comments or thoughts about where our priorities would lie?
Are there going to be other opportunities for us to give input on this joint session? Or is this kind of our time to bring forward those thoughts?
Sorry, we can, we can certainly agendize this item again. If we're, if we hold the meeting on June 25th. I know we've got this agenda. I don't know that we have a May 26th agenda yet. So we could certainly program a June 9th agenda if, if that's, you know, the commissions will. To make sure we discuss that. And I may know more by then whether or not we're actually going to hold it on June 25th as well. So complex answer to a simple question, I guess the short answer would be we can certainly come back again if the commission would like to do that and discuss this further. Commissioner Barstow has his hand raised. I guess I would suggest for this part of the meeting. You know, unless it gets completely out of control, let's go ahead and just try and round robin and jump in and forget the hand raising for now and we'll, we'll try and run that.
I think a, a topic that would be valuable for us and for the city council is to outline the current state rules that would affect the, the ability to control or to allow ADUs and particularly the, the topic of the third unit, the second ADU that would be allowable and how we're going to think about incorporating that into our, our codes.
We can certainly talk about that. And maybe, I know it's been promised that we would bring that information back. We got a little sidetracked of late, but we did promise to bring that back to the planning commission. I can update you have completely digested that, you know, that state law at this point. We've created a flow chart and, and I can share that with the planning commission. Long story short, we're, I mean, the state law trumps our local codes on this. Our local ordinance is out of compliance with state law, and so we've been implementing state law. We're kind of waiting to see, you know, there's a lot of new housing regulation happening right now and we're waiting to see what's, where it lands before actually going and updating our ordinance. If we had updated our ordinance last year, it would be out of compliance again this year. And so at this point, I'm taking a wait and see until it settles down a little bit. I don't, I guess what I'm trying to say is I'm not sure if it's a topic worthy of having a discussion. You know, policy wise between the city council and the planning commission, other than just an informational, this is what we're doing. Because state law requires us to do it.
Yeah, that's what I, I was envisioning the, the situation at present. And, you know, the city council has so many things on their plate that they can't really follow all this stuff. So I think it'd be helpful for everybody to review it. And particularly the, the areas where we actually have some decision-making to do.
David, quick question. As I look at the city council priority projects list for 2020. They're numbered, is, are they ranked in those numbers?
No, those are not rankings. They're just the order in which they're listed.
All right. Well, perhaps then it's just a coincidence that the number one item is prioritize the housing strategic plan. I, it's hard for me to imagine us not talking about infill in this gateway project and/or where we're headed with some of the broad concepts or goals with infill.
Yeah, I would second that in respects of discussing the housing strategic plan and regards of the infill, strategic infill redevelopment plan. And also streamlining, streamlining permitting. Because they're very, you know, they're essentially one or the other. So it is two very useful things to be discussed.
Judy, I'm sorry, Commissioner Mayor?
I can be either. I, I, I was also going to say, I think it's inevitable that we're going to have have a little bit of a discussion with the city council about the strategic infill plan. Timing of that relative to when these other documents are due to come out or at least in draft. Gets kind of tricky and it would be nice to have some input from council on the discussion of how, how that's all going to fit together. And also knowing that if these are going to be feeding into some general plan updates. That doing those updates is going to require some money and some staff time. And to make sure that, you know, we're not talking about things that the council will feel have blindsided them as far as you know, their, their need to provide resources would go and what is probably going to be a pretty tight time. I also would really like to see how this is going to fit in with the local coastal program. I, I know that the gateway project and the coastal program, they do kind of, you know, fit together. And we've been waiting for a draft of the local coastal program documents for a while. I kind of like to have some discussion of that before suddenly there's a public draft out there and maybe talk with the city council as well about the planning commission looking at a point before we have, you know, a public draft, when we have sort of a working idea of an administrative draft of that so that you know, we're not stuck with this, oh yeah, now it's time for public comments. So that's something that I think the city council has discussed before and it would be Has discussed before and it would be really nice to sit down again with them and um. Talk about some of the policy issues that that's going to raise as. Infill stuff comes across as well. Um, and somehow, you know, to talk. How those fit together. Um, we had that discussion about a year and a half or two years ago. I think at that meeting and, and it would be great to revisit that two years later.
Yeah, those are uh, good ideas too. The um. LCP certainly is on a, you know, a short. Uh, fast track. Uh, we have an LCP grant that expires at the end of this year and so. Um, we do definitely want to bring. Uh, you know, that to the, the planning commission uh, soon. And I know maybe just a, you know, uh, you know, terms, you know, how we're, how we're phrasing it. I mean, I think what I'm hearing you say is that. Uh, you don't want a fully baked LCP to come to the commission. Um, and certainly we won't do that. Um, in terms of sharing administrative drafts, um, I don't feel like we can do that as well. Um, we're still, we're still at a point where. Uh, you know, we can uh, we're working with coastal staff and uh, finalizing on uh, you know. On issues with them. Uh, and bringing around um, you know, redrafts based on their comments. Uh, and my hope is that, you know, we'll get through this. This next round and be at a point where we can uh, you know, bring the documents forward, recognizing that. You know, there are still issues that need to be uh, resolved between uh, the city and the, and the coastal staff. Uh, also recognizing that, you know, this isn't uh, you know, completely black box. As you mentioned, we've been. Working on the LCP for years, in fact, uh, more than a decade at this point. Um. Uh, and if you really want to hearken back, we've been working on it for more than 20 years because the original general plan 2020 was supposed to be part of the LCP update. Uh, and there have been changes, you know, in coastal commission direction several times in that, that timeframe. I think that, you know, that, that would be a good uh, policy discussion to have. Uh, maybe not a nitty gritty, you know, looking at the text uh, discussion, but. You know, what are the big picture policy issues? Because there are certainly some that. It aren't going to change in this uh, in this update. So if other commissioners are interested in talking about LCP, I think that'd be a good topic as well. We do run the risk of, you know, getting too many meaty uh, conversations going and not being able to dig in deep enough into, you know, each of them. And so I would, you know, caution the uh, the commission from having too many big uh, items to discuss and really focusing on the priorities.
Uh, David, is there uh, from a staff level, much of a concern about meeting arena goals? What is it? 610 units by 2027?
Yeah, um, I have a huge concern. I mean, our, our regional housing needs allocation uh, is. Uh, contingent on this planning effort that we're doing right now. Um. There's. Not enough vacant land to meet our regional housing need allocation now and our uh, housing element was certified. Uh, under the assumption that the Creekside Homes project would get approved and annexed. That part has been. You know, it's at least approved at the local level. We still need to go through the LAFCO annexation. Uh, and that the uh, targeted up zones and uh, specifically the specific area plan. Uh, would create additional uh, residential capacity. So yeah, I'm, I'm very concerned that we're uh. You know, if we, you know, if our timelines lag or if we're, you know. Uh, not able to uh, ultimately produce on those that will uh, you know, be deemed not compliant. And then we'll slip into some of those uh, penalty phases where the state can actually um. Penalize us for uh. Uh, you know, for not being compliant. Uh, there are actually, um, you know, there's potential for uh, monetary penalties as well.
David, are you concerned at all that the budget shortfalls at the state and local jurisdiction level? Um, due to the current COVID situation are going to impact monies that? The city would be sort of directing at these housing projects or that has been. Promised at the state level or those budgetary items that have sort of already been put aside?
Um, you know, it's a hard question to answer. I, I do think that many of our uh, housing programs and, and economic development programs are grant funded. Uh, at this point, um, there doesn't seem to be a uh, you know, a threat to, to those grant funds. Um, and as Commissioner Mayor pointed out earlier, there likely will be uh, stiffer competition for those in the future. I, you know, uh, don't want to toot our own horn here, but uh, city of Arcata has been. Historically very competitive. We have a very sophisticated uh, staff uh, when it comes to running those grant programs. And um. I believe we will continue to be competitive in the future. Uh, at, at securing the, you know, those, those funds. Uh, certainly this is going to impact, um. You know. Other things that are outside of our control. I mean, you know, the market itself, you know, whether or not the students come back in person next uh, semester, uh, how long it takes the. Student body to, you know, build up from the losses that it will have uh, is one huge uh, component to. Uh, what's going to be driving the housing market. And so. You know, to the extent that we, you know, plan for growth and, and to the extent that we have growth is, you know, really dependent on factors that are being, you know, set in motion because of the, uh, you know, the COVID. Shelter in place orders. I don't have a, you know. Crystal ball that I'm uh, the eternal optimist. Um, and I think that, you know. Uh, I'm, I'm trying to stay focused on uh, you know, progress that we can make now to be uh, to maintain resiliency. Uh, we've got some uh, economic programs that we're running in the community. Try and support businesses and, and help patch in where, you know, the federal government has been slow to respond. Um, we'll continue to do similar work uh, as we can with the, you know, the housing side. And I think that, you know, part of what, you know, recovery looks like for the city of Arcata is largely. Dependent on uh, how much effort we put in now to, to resiliency and, and, and support, um, you know, the community. But yeah, it's, those are really open questions. Uh, certainly our primary funding source in the city of Arcata as a whole is the general fund. And uh, that's going to take a, a huge near term impact.
Because of tax revenues largely?
Largely because of tax revenues, uh, sales tax in particular.
Well, are there any other thoughts? Uh, it sounds like LCP and infill. Planning are the two top items so far, and then John suggested we. Touch on the ADU stuff if we can. Is there anything else?
Um, this, this might not be a topic for that joint um, city council planning commission session. But I did notice on the city council priorities list. Um, it indicated that a land use code. Uh, amendment or provision would be coming with regard to the 5G. And again, that the city would have relatively little. Um, ability to do its own regulation there. There was a note um, in an article I'd, I'd read a month ago from Nancy Diamond. Talking about the um. Federal law there and, and you know, that, that might not be something for the city council. Planning commission joint session, but since it did say there was a land use code. Um, amendment draft in the works. I, I'm just kind of wondering what the status of that is right now.
David. Yeah, I'm sorry. Were you uh, referring to number 14? You broke up a little bit. I think you were talking about the 5G ordinance.
Yes, number 14. And, and again, I'm, I'm not sure that that's something for this particular joint session. Um, but it would definitely um. Be coming to the planning commission uh, because there was a zoning consideration and apparently. Um, the city council had decided uh, to. Direct that back into zoning back a few months ago. Um, in January, so I'm, I'm just kind of wondering. Um, if that's something that we're actually going to end up. Addressing and if there's something that the city council. Might want to uh, discuss with us about that.
Um. I, I think that, you know, that topic is uh, you know, kind of. Uh, back burner right now. Um, the. You know, the, the local. The latest is that, yeah, the local uh, regulations are uh, pretty minimal, what we can actually impose. This goal was actually from the beginning of this fiscal year, the 2019, uh, 20 fiscal year. Uh, and it was based on information that we were working with uh, out of the prior fiscal years. It made its way into the budget uh, then. And um, a lot of that thinking is um, you know, has been lapsed by, by current uh, law and regulation. So I, I can uh. You know, probably not in the next couple of meetings, but I can certainly bring you an update on that. I think one of the other uh. Sort of nuances to what, how uh, that topic shifted is that. Um, while right now there is a telecommunications section in the land use code, um. Uh, the more we understood about uh, you know, the federal regulations. Uh, it seemed that any uh, local legislation we would enact would likely end up uh, not in the land use code, but in the municipal code. And that's not to say that, um, you know, the council couldn't ask the planning commission to review it uh, even still, but. Uh, may not be a, a land use um, issue at the end of the day.
Okay, any other thoughts or questions about that joint? Council commission meeting? Seeing none, we'll move on to correspondence and communications. Uh, do we have any communications from the commission? Do we have any uh, communications from staff?
I'm all communicated out.
Okay, I think that wraps for the evening. Thank you all and we'll adjourn.
Thank you.